I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the Moni Village Board for June 10th. If you will rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. My pledge of allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Gonzalez, Gray.
Here.
Holston.
Present.
Horn.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Tracy.
Present.
Very briefly, I'd just like to let everybody know that the building is not as young as it used to be and the air conditioning is in the process of being repaired. And I believe there were some stuffs that were taken to correct some of the earlier than half a minute, just so you're aware of it. Pastor Phutus, if you would provide the invocation.
Thank you. Great God, you're the source of all wisdom, of all power, of all justice and truth, and we bow before you at the beginning of this meeting, relying on you to make the leaders of this village wise. We thank you for them. We thank you for their willingness to serve the rest of the residents here, and we pray, Lord, that you will guide all that they deliberate and decide upon tonight. We thank you too for interested residents who are attending this meeting and for their contributions. We pray that you will help those contributions too and be helpful and positive. We thank you, Lord, for those who serve the village as police officers, as safety and fire personnel and others, Lord, who are serving in those capacities. Help them, Lord, to be kept safe in their work and to protect the safety of others who live here. We pray, Lord, that you will help everyone in this town of Moni to flourish, that those who are entrusted with leadership to do their best to serve their part and to help all the rest of us, Lord, to serve one another. We pray that we can grow in the grace and in the knowledge of our Lord Jesus Christ. We pray, Lord, that the churches of the village too may contribute to its well-being and that those who are part of those churches can be encouragers and a blessing. And so, Lord, we ask again that you will, as you promised, guide these people whom you put in authority and give them your grace, for Jesus' sake. Amen.
Thank you. At this point, we have open to the public and judo items only. Please leave your comments to three minutes. Come to the voting and give your name and address, please.
Good evening. George Pearson, five one zero eight, West Roberts Ridge Road. Mr. Mayor, distinguished board members. As a member of the Police and Fire Commission, there were a couple items on the agenda tonight that were of concern. I've been informed that this information will be discussed with you guys, you know, at a more detailed event, so I will... I had some comments prepared for this. I'm not at all happy with how this piece of ordinance was written and how it came about. I spent a lot of time, myself and Mr. Johnson and other members, and Mr. Dresbet, of getting the Police Commission up and off the ground as well as the chief. So when I see stuff like this, it makes me wonder, was that time in vain? Was there a who authored it? And was all information gathered and input placed into this? So to keep from going any further until you guys have had an opportunity to actually go through the packet, go through the ordinance, I will reserve my comments because, again, I've been told that this will be tabled for the next session. However, if that's not true, tell me now.
What specific ordinance is yours for the record?
On... It's K nine on your packet. Item number eight listed on the agenda for ordinances.
Item eight, that's the police personnel guideline?
The police personnel guideline.
Is that the only one?
That's... Unless it was a different packet than what is online, because...
Just that one or do the others?
Well, there are a couple others as a participant of a business owner in the neighborhood that concerns me as well. This is more precedent to me than any of the others because this will also involve litigation. It will also involve possible suits. And as a village, I don't think it's something that should be entered into light. We will have further discussion.
For the record, are you a member of the Police Commission?
I am.
For the record, has this been brought forward to you before?
No, it has not.
Thank you.
Maybe I didn't hear you, Mr. Pearson. Are you speaking of K eight on our agenda?
I'm not sure what it is.
Does this have anything to do with the police?
Correct.
K eight, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nothing else on the realty open to the public. How are taken a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Allison Pop. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Tracy.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Good. Church report? I have nothing at this time. You want to change your report?
Just thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item, it's a request from Public Works. Requested a purchase of two thousand and fifteen International Award. Two thousand and fifteen International Work Star Dump Truck with snowplow and work attachments to help supplement the P P W fleet. This is... Could be purchased through the National Joint Powers Alliance Pricing Program for the road truck equipment. It's a budget of expense during the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen fiscal year and is being made prior to the budget approval due to the timeliness and the sensitive work order requirements. It is billed to order. The order would take approximately six to seven months to make the order. Delivery date sometime in December or January of two thousand and sixteen. If approved today, the order will take that many months, and the dump truck also has options. And with those options in the truck itself, the cost will not exceed one hundred and sixty-eight thousand. It's below that, I believe. If you want.
Good evening, Board. I apologize for the lateness, that this didn't get on your packet as far as the full National Joint Powers Alliance bid process. They're quite busy. I got the final number in today. It was at one sixty-one, eight nineteen would be the total for this purchase with the attachments that we're looking to give for this vehicle. We've scaled back on a lot of the creature comforts and upgrade to the meat and potatoes of the truck to be able to handle cold winters, safety, wing, so on and so forth. All the specs were attached in your packet, just that final number wasn't in there, so...
Before we go to a vote on this, I do want to bring up a... You and I had a conversation today just regarding the jetter truck. And it was a very expensive investment for the village and just as a result of some of the projects that we've been encountering with our improvements and infrastructure, how much has those major investments been of benefit to your department and what would they have cost not to have them?
The amounts over the time since we've had that truck is, I can't even quantify the totals, just for today with the emergencies that we had going on throughout the municipality, just having that truck saved time, contractor time, re-mobilization fees, thousands, I mean, just thousands upon thousands. It was actually nice for the engineers to hear, you know, it's good to have this kind of equipment, so...
And this new vehicle you're looking at provides certain capabilities that none of our existing vehicles have, is that correct?
Correct, based on the last few years' snowfalls and kind of taking a toll is what we have currently. This particular vehicle will bring in a new element to help combat some of the deep freezes and some of the winter blizzards that we have with the higher snow totals. This truck is going to be equipped with a wing on the side so that we can combat some of the drifting that we get out in the rural areas, which may reduce on, you know, call-out times at night when the streets roll over, which result in overtime, to try to push that stuff back just to the edge. It also has a capability to mix a brine solution with assault, which will help penetrate down to lower temperatures to help follow the streets in those colder temps. Anybody remembers last year when Court Street, it rained and then it snowed and it iced over? It felt like speed bumps going down Court Street. That was ice trying to penetrate in certain areas and it just... It took forever, so to get through, we just didn't have brine to kind of get down into the colder temps. So this truck will be outfitted with that, as well as in the budget. Once you guys review it, we'll have the brine solution here at the village hall to be able to refill it. And then we're going with a new style blade that will angle to be able to get up under that ice and help roll that over in sheets and get it off of the way. So many new features that have come over the years and with us keeping kind of a hundred-dollar track on what we spend on our vehicles. There's a kind of a formula that we use with the in-house maintenance department, being able to take care of it. Most of the dollars that were spent were due to plow repairs, upgrades, and just not the vehicles themselves, but the attachments that were on that we had to fix that are just getting beat up and banged up, so...
Board?
If I could just throw my two cents on this, board members. Again, driving with our superintendent last winter, we spent half a day out there and we only had... We have two big trucks that can take care of major roads. A lot of our smaller trucks, unfortunately, myself and the superintendent got stuck. We had to get another truck that was working on things, got him pulled out, saw another small truck, get him pulled out. They understand, we understand that you... The snow can't go everywhere and there's places to be. This will help alleviate that and it will help get streets cleaner. And again, DJ and I have talked about this again since last December, that's when he first brought it up to me. And we talked about it about a month ago. I mean, this... It's a big price, but it's a multi-task truck. It's not just for plumbing. It will help in a lot of, like you said, the emergencies we had today in the jetta truck, you know? In the long run, it will be a good investment. So again, I just wanted to put my, you know, opinion in, working with DJ for the last year and a half.
Anybody else on the board?
Yeah, I'd like to just... Being retired, I have an opportunity to drive the streets occasionally, and I observe what was going on with our vehicle that we purchased last year. And I understand that the engineering company that observed it or not couldn't believe how fast he's repaired something and unclogged another thing in the same area. They were astounded, was the word, I do believe. So that piece of equipment that we purchased a year or so, a couple of years ago, I don't know, has definitely baked, you know, quite a bit of itself with that. And the other one, thing I wanted to ask though, and I think the answer is going to be from it, the new figure you have is still figured in the budget, correct?
Absolutely.
Questions for me?
Got a couple of questions, sir. Is this... Daryl's not here tonight? Is this line zero three zero zero eight three five in the proposed budget that we're working on right now?
Couldn't believe it would be in the proposed budget, then Daryl... If it was in... If DJ presented it, Daryl, whatever the account number is, whatever DJ presented...
It's zero three zero zero eight three five and expenditure of one hundred and sixty-five thousand for next year.
That was a number that was... I'm not... I don't have the laptop, so I don't know what you're seeing right now.
Okay.
But I know where it's coming out of my budget, and that's not the two line items that are coming out of it.
Broke salt, three removal capital out?
No, sir, that is not it.
What is that?
That's broke salt. That's the purchase and the expense.
Hundred and sixty-five thousand?
Well, you're looking at a budget, sir. I can't compare that number.
Where is this... We say it's in the proposed budget. That particular proposed budget is showing a deficit of one hundred and thirteen thousand for next year. That's the right difference. So if we approve this, we're proving a deficit budget?
No, that's incorrect.
I'm looking at it.
No.
Sent to us yesterday.
When I talked to Daryl yesterday before he sent out the draft proposal of the budget, and it's just still working project.
I understand.
It was a balanced budget that he submitted to the trustees.
This is what he sent out, and it's not balanced. This is not balanced. And I'm not saying it's not a good expense. I'm just saying if we're going to spend this money and it's going to create a deficit, we're going to have to look at taking it somewhere else when we go through the final budgeting process. I want to point this out to the board because the main this budget shows a deficit. And I went through this, and the only place that I see where this expenditure probably is right there.
That's incorrect.
You have draft version one?
That's incorrect.
I have the last version of the Senate.
This is N F T. So we're going to be N F T balanced. My... It comes out of two accounts, O two. For new equipment, new motorized equipment.
Seventy thousand?
Yeah. And then the second account is at O eight because this is going to be a dual-purpose truck. It's going to be used for the winter time and it's going to be used for the summer time for main graces.
So we...
Two water accounts. Because Public Works has multiple departments that come out of their O eight. And it'll be used for new equipment.
And that's sixty-five. So in total, that's less than one hundred and sixty-five.
No, budget two thousand and fifteen is going to be in there.
Okay. So that's basically all that you're going to purchase for next year?
Yes.
And that's the one that's less than one hundred and thirty thousand.
There's a... I haven't seen that budget, so I can't... It's going to happen. I have to talk to Daryl. So when he gave the final numbers, I don't know where he came at with that. Our water department last year for the fiscal budget with the water rate increase and everything ended positive. So what he has programmed in there right now, we're doing water main construction, road bridge construction. There may be money that are coming from the bond that we passed that may be supplementing that, so... But our water department runs at a positive, not in a negative, since the board here has instituted the water rate increases.
Okay. Just want to point out to the board that as of right now, this is a deficit budget, which means when we do the final budget, we're going to make sure we balance it. We may have to cut something else. Just want to point that out, and I'd like to have that on the record. Mr. Berg, you move, please.
What was the total price of the one sixty-one, eight nineteen?
While preparing to make a motion, discussion is over. I would make a motion that we approve this expenditure pending review of the budget. If this is in the budget, we open the deficit spending.
I think... I'll make the discussion.
It's a rule of thumb. So you can have discussion. You don't have to say anything.
Yeah, I really have a discussion. Just hold your moles for a second. It started at one sixty-eight, now we dropped down to one sixty-one. And if we don't approve it tonight and we wait for another two weeks, now, Ruben, I'm sorry, how long did it... Were you looking at this?
Six to seven months. So...
And a nice summer, January. Yeah, so we'll put it to January, February.
Which is when our city gets really bad.
Possible.
Possible. Right. Which basically, exactly, Mayor, it's...
Yeah, and I hear what you're saying, and I agree. If we're going to approve it, we're going to have to approve it, not subject because he has to order. I do... I gotta have. It's just that the pattern is every major capital improvement purchase we've made in the last year that I've heard of, we've got to make it right now. We don't have time to go pay to it. All of a sudden comes up and we got to make it right now. And I think we get criticized sometimes because we'll vote on stuff like this. It just came up tonight from public discussion. It has to be done right now. We don't know for sure where the budget stands, but we got to do it right now.
Understood. Understood.
I've been working on this for quite a while, if I may say so, to get the right product here for you. The problem that's going to delay this right now is other municipalities have already passed their budgets that work on the same fiscal year that we do, so it's kind of pushed it back. So this isn't... Although it may be new to you, it's not new like to what trustee, who oversees my department, has told you. Trustee Gray, he's been known... He's known about this, and we've worked this out for quite a while. I understand it takes the hold and it's not... This has been a planned purchase for... Since last year to try to get this done, as trustee Gray stated. So in some of the other things that I know you've experienced in the past, they felt rushed. This isn't... This is just a commitment. We're not going to buy it, and we'll have plenty of time to work on the budget. If I have to trim numbers in my department to make it work, I will do that. This is more safety related, so I can assure you.
I'm not disagreeing with you, and I appreciate what you're doing. I'm just... There's a lot of new things on the agenda tonight. This is the first one. And we're talking about spending a lot of money tonight. People in the village are paying for this. Broke Crew has done a great job, no question about that. Okay. I'll second you.
Hold on a second. You can second it, that's fine. You made a comment there during your discussion though that indicated that if he doesn't have authority to deal with this before the budget is passed and approved.
I didn't say that. I didn't know.
That was what the motion was. Basically, he stipulated conditions on the motion.
Right.
Motion in that second, that's going to be a problem because...
And I'll only second it so we can have the discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Larry, help me out on this.
Yeah, basically, Your Honor, it sounds like a conditional motion, and once you authorize Ruben to sign the purchase order, the end company doesn't care about a motion. They just care about that money coming in. So it had to be either a motion to...
Approve or not.
Exactly. Because once it's signed by again either Ruben or DJ, the supplier, they don't care about what our concerns are. We have a contract with them.
So on a formality, Larry, if the board wants to do it on the condition, they should vote in favor, but now if they want to vote without the condition, the one method would be, on the formalities here, the one method would be to everybody vote no on the existing motion and then restate the motion as...
A motion authorized.
And then we'll have to deal with the touches and issue upon its own.
That's more of an internal issue about how we're going to pay for it versus the supplier. Again, they're not going to be concerned by...
Or can the person who made the motion at this time amend the motion?
Either that or withdraw the motion, withdraw the second and make a motion.
Your call, yes.
I will withdraw the motion, but I feel this way, if I may say, I will withdraw it. I must make the comment that we hire lawyer, administrator, financial director. The financial director, I mean, this motion, in mind, says it's within budget. We don't need a vote on it. It's done as far as that, but apparently it's not legal.
Well, because it's over a certain number of dollars, since it's over twenty thousand dollars, it requires board approval.
Well, I'm just saying that I don't feel we want to go over budget. I'm trying to attack that. Daryl says it's within budget.
The budget's yet to be approved, yeah.
I rescind my motion. Favor, do you want to...
I'll rescind the second.
Okay.
Do you want to make a new motion?
No.
Somebody want to make a motion?
For counsel?
You can have a discussion if you want.
Make a motion not to exceed X amount of dollars or...
You can do that, so it's a motion not to exceed.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. You know, he... I'm sorry. DJ has already closed the price just to be on the safe side, not to exceed. I'll make a motion not to exceed a hundred and sixty-three thousand. I know it's one sixty-one something, but is that a definite price? If you put one sixty-two, I'll hold on to it. They gave you the paper here, so...
Second.
All right. I'm sorry, Doug Evans got to make it one sixty-two. I mean, I will make the motion not to exceed a hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Okay. And then Doug, did you have a second on that?
Hit it. Was it a hundred and sixty-three or a hundred and sixty-two?
One sixty-two.
One sixty-two, I'm sorry, clear. Discussion now?
Yes, please.
So as a discussion, I will vote for the motion, but with the understanding very clearly that I will expect a balanced budget, just because it's in the proposed budget doesn't mean it's going to be approved. And so as DJ's saying, we may have to look at cutting something else. I understand why you did. I don't disagree with that, but as I look at the facilities maintenance budget, it's extremely high over what was last year's budget, and when we get to that point, I'm going to make sure that we look at that from a personal point of view and we'll vote everybody as well.
And ideally, it also... That unit, in theory, will also help cut our overtime costs. Is one... Maybe not significantly, but it will cut some.
That's a plan.
That's a goal. And we'll measure it. We'll see how much of a difference it makes. Some of those things are, just like the jetta truck, we didn't know until we had it how valuable it would be. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. So is Gray and Horn, any more discussion?
Yes, sir. One last thing. Mr. Batista and I attended a meeting this weekend where one of the subjects that came up is taking in capital inventory.
Yeah.
These kind of expenditures really are better well-spent when we get an inventory of what we have in the village of capital assets. And I really... And I think DJ has made a... Oh, no, I'm sorry. Administrator Batista has made a point to say he is in the process of working on that, but I think we need to do that because we're talking about a lot of money here. This is not an expense. This is a capital.
Well, sure.
And we really need to have a good idea of what we have, and we need to be looking down the road the next five years so that when we go through the budgeting process, the board knows, okay, next year we're going to be looking at this, this, and this, so that it doesn't come up all of a sudden to the board. So I would just ask that we continue to do that and begin to put that in the record.
Okay. Absolutely. Any other discussion on this?
I'm assuming that price includes all taxes and title and everything.
We do not pay taxes, so it is tax-free. Taxes are...
Any more discussion on this particular topic? Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston?
Yes.
And I, on a side note, I would like to thank trustee Gonzalez for bringing the... Her... Whatever else we're exposing our friends to.
Thank you, Gordon.
Next, you want to address trustee Holston's?
Yes, just to follow up and touch on the inventory. There's a discussion that trustee Holston and I had that is part of the plan is to do an inventory of the village assets. During the bonding procedure back over the winter, it was a nightmare. It was a very arduous task for the finance director and myself to gather the assets. We also do somewhat of an asset inventory for swarm on an annual basis, but what the village... What we plan on doing is inventory every piece that the village owns, be it vehicles, equipments, desks, locations, any technology, all of that being identified, located, a dollar amount assessed to that item, and then that being kept electronically. I realize it's going to be a task that I'm going to have a few folks in this task force committee putting this together. We're researching it now through I M L. There is a system... There are systems available now. We're looking at software, and there'll be some purchasing of equipment in order to inventory cabinets that are in the back, these phones and desks and so forth, all of it having a place, and so we know what we own. But to go and caveat along with Public Works, the system will help us to identify the things that are aging, that are breaking down, that need a repair, and where we have a systematic plan in place to purchase things prior to that value, coming to a point where we're putting people in jeopardy and bringing danger and out into the workforce. So that plan is being researched right now, so we do it right. It's going to take at least twelve to eighteen months to do this, to identify every piece of equipment that the village has, just to make the board aware of that.
And this time we'll proceed to the officials' report. Trustee Girth, Public Works. Parks and Recreation.
Just a couple things to remind everybody that the Glow in the Dark Story Hour, presented by the Pageon Library and Parks and Recreation, is tomorrow, June eleventh, at eight... by the Peatone Library and Parks and Recreation is tomorrow, June 11th at 8:00 p.m. in Fireman's Park. The free program is, you know, nighttime story hour, depending whether I'm sure, Glow in the Dark books and a Making a Craft. And then second is the first movie in the park on Friday is, at Fireman's Park is Big Hero Six. And then, and the concession stand will be open for, for purchases as well on that night. And then the third thing that I wanted to bring up too, and I will put everybody on the spot on this one. I know we had talked about Relay for Life coming up in, in Peatone. We have a team, a Village of Monee team, and we have one person here already on our team and raising money too. But that being said, Mr. Mayor and DJ, I would literally, one of the things that I would like to do is paint the town purple. I know I've gotten some interest from several of the businesses in doing various things. But I also have like purple ribbons that I would like to, for general cancer awareness, to be able to put ribbons on trees if somebody wants one to put on the parkway trees, as long as that doesn't hinder any of the, the tree process.
Color isn't becoming that.
If that's not a designated color, that will mark it for removal.
Let me just dress up briefly if I can. We have- Trustee Gonzalez, you recall we had a very difficult situation a couple of days after New Year's. And there was a request to put ribbons on all the trees and all the parkways and all this sort of thing. And I think the, the general rule of thumb at that time was even though the trees are in the parkway and it's technically owned by the village, as a courtesy, I believe the recommendation through Public Works and Parks and Rec at that time was that if the homeowner who, that tree is in front of their home ought to be, ought to have the option of whether it would be there or not. Not something that we would put in somebody's yard or what seems to be their yard. So-
Because the, the group and everything has already said that they want to be part of it. So I just, you know, whether it be around their, you know, yard trees or on the front porch or on the mailboxes or what have you, if anybody would like a purple ribbon.
Larry, I don't see a, a legal issue there other than just making sure that the adjacent property owner is the one that's making the decision on what's in front of their home. Is that, is that a fair enough way to, to deal with that as long as the color scheme doesn't tell the excavators to go, to go knocking it down or something? Sir, duration, is that the other question?
No, we'd ask, we just put them out in a little bit of street like Paul for the scene at night and that usually takes a lot of the town to doubt and if it doesn't hinder under a tree.
Or how about the bridge?
These are things that we can-
Those are issues of duration and such, I think.
Well, the relay is July 24th. So myself and, and the team would make sure that the day after or by, you know, at least the week after that all purple will be done.
Larry, you have the input on, if it's on public property, if it's on private property or the public property in front of somebody's home, people care for their landscaping. Keep in mind, keep in mind, whatever you decide, keep in mind that whatever you set precedent for now becomes the rule of thumb going forward for any and every thing that goes on. So this, this is a great cause, no question about it. But keep in mind whatever is established now. And that's, I think that's part of the reason why when Parks and Rec and Public Works were consulting regarding that other situation, the easiest answer at that time, Ruben, you recall, wasn't the easiest answer at the time to just simply allow it. Individual homeowners, the, the ability to do it with the expectation of them getting ratty or whatever else that somebody wanted to clean them up or take them down after a certain duration. Because they don't have a policy to deal with, the policy that you guys are doing. They don't have a policy to deal with if it could be everything and anything. So if you want to go around the bridges, I think that's a good, I'm sure that's off on the property. And that's something where, something school like Tegn, you know, how do you define those policies that affect the, more a critical structure of the place than the works. If they're in front of people's homes, I don't think you need permission for it.
We have a situation in the village where I live, I've done nineteen votes by, by the motorboat in Afghanistan. We made the rules in the village. Every other street of length, there's all the trees we all, and we asked people to remove it within three to five days. There's still a lot to that. Very, very impressive.
And that's kind of what I would like to do because we live in such a small, tight little community too, that we paint the town purple, that we can have, there's purple light bulbs available and artists and things to put on our boards and things. It really does make a very purple statement, very purple thing. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
Sue, the question I have for you is if you're putting on the bridges or you're putting on our light posts, is that something the board wants Public Works to be distracted from on the road projects or any sort of-
You know, we have a team together. We have volunteers.
Then the criteria by which we're applying fixing most to those situations, we need to also make criteria. Because we've had people make unfortunate situations of using duct tape to hold things to things. And once that duct tape gets heated up, it doesn't come off. It looks terrible. You get brand new aluminum poles in some places and they're already looking nasty because of, so all of a sudden, if the board makes an recommendation on this, that's one, simply that, whatever DJ, because he has to do it quick and so. I'm okay with you. I just want to make sure the board thinks about it. I'm not personally thinking this is, this is not something worth attacking. I totally support, I think the Dallas, and I think the organization, like any organization, if you do that, you think of the government administration, the crew, which I'm sure will get. But when it comes to putting something in my yard, personally as a citizen, you better give my approval. And I think most people would have that attitude, whether it's, you know, that tent foot out there. I mow that. I take care of that. I take offense to people putting stuff in my yard without my approval. I get enough information out of what I'm about. Sure.
If they come to me and say, can we put that on? I'm going to say yes for this cause, but that's my call.
And my intent is the people will request them from us, you know, that we're not going out and just all, you know, doing it.
But if the board do, what I think would be probably-
And that's my concern, if there's a policy now.
That organization could come for-
Why they changed their organization?
I have the organization.
I thought it was Parks and Rec.
Well, it's kind of, that's for other, she's, she's changed that. Had space mask, but in case, whatever, whatever you require. More discussion. I want you guys to all, whatever you want to do is fine. If you think it requires board action, if you don't think it requires board action, it is simply a matter of offering it to anybody up and down whatever streets you want to target, that's fine. If you're talking about putting something on the bridges, sure, it could be pretty. Where do you draw the line? That's a decision you all have to make. Your call, whatever you want to do on that. I, I think that your concern is the same as what I've heard from others is that if it's in front of your house, you treat it as your own. And we expect that. But trustee Gonzalez-
I mean-
Hold on, hold on, Heidi, I'm sorry. It should have recorded board action. I mean, basically like trustee Holson said, it, you know what it is? It's a good cause. And if you want to go ahead and put purple on the tree and the light poles and your friends in your house, just support it. Go ahead and support it. As far as bridges go, I know that Heidi Gonzalez has enough people out there that would support this to go around and take stuff down that they put the stuff up. This, this shouldn't be, all she was doing is making a suggestion, hey, if you want to support, we don't need to discuss this. Fifteen, 20 minutes here, folks. Okay? There shouldn't be a board action. We'll support it. Obviously, we have a team. She, she's worked, brought out to get a team in the middle of July. They're going to do what they need to do. And then, you know, a day or two afterwards, it's not going to be out. Even with this, like what our attorney said, yes, they're, they're still a good, a good cause. Our folks will take care of it. We don't need to bring this thing forward. We'll support it. People want to support it, we'll support it. Pretty much my opinion and discussion. We don't really need to drag this out. See now we think what we need for, for, for something, Patrick, you know, true blocks that ding something. They don't come to the board. They just want to do it because we don't need to argue. Could be someone against the law. It could be someone who wants to impeach or file. Who knows what? And just saying that nice thing means a, so I think this gives us some control. And just saying, obviously, we still work out, but we want to get the board. And I would-
I, I, what I'm hearing, you probably, I informed Meyer, I'm all for it.
I was going to say, you know, I'll just, if anybody wants purple ribbons or wants to put purple up in their yard, please, you know, talk to me about it. And I will talk to DJ about any public property news or anything.
I, I wouldn't do this. Just, I think the reality is like, I mean-
And if you do, or if you do a fraction of the policy, it's better for us to approve than, than vote.
Sure.
So here's how I'm handling that.
Still a little more different term.
Any other questions?
Pointed?
Yeah, a couple of things. You probably noticed that stickers and PIP tags are delayed, right? They have a danger anxiety and renewal forms are started, are going out the end of this week, maybe early next week. As a result, the enforcement of stickers and the due date will be extended. Do you know what the due date extension is?
It's, it's usually for the month of June. We'll just extend it two weeks into July, from what I've understood. And part of the thing, just to, just to go into that, what we, what we found out, I was talking to one of the coaches in baseball the other night. I was like, he looked here six years before he realized that there was vehicle stickers that were required. What has happened is you move into town and if you've never received a renewal notice, well, how are you going to, how are you going to receive a renewal notice if you never had one in the first place? So what we've, what we've discovered is that there is a lack of continuity of our data structures that were in place, locus. The database we use here is not the best by any means. We've had a number of issues with that. What we ended up doing is reaching out to the engineering firm and asking them to provide us a comprehensive address map listing. So we made sure every address received a form. And in order to do that, we want to make sure we weren't wasting postage and double delivering. And we may do that anyhow because some people have PO boxes, even though they have a street address. So we had to go through our utility billing. We got people who get utility bills. There was like 50 people who have utility bills that don't have vehicle stickers, you know, just, or addresses. So there might be two or three vehicles in those homes. So there's a number of these and then the actual property addresses. So that's part of the reason for that delay is making sure it's comprehensive and complete. And it's, and other towns, did they even send out a notice at all? Some won't know. They just posted out and say, can we get your stickers or do not. You know, we're trying to make sure that all the information being sent out enables us to make sure everybody's well advised. So, thank you, Doug.
Can I ask just an ignorant, just an ignorant question on that? For folks living in the rental properties, are they required devices?
Yes.
Couple of other things. Businesses that have submitted their business license now appear in the business directory on the village's website. Contractors and subcontractors in good standing with the village also will be posted soon. So please support our local businesses and contractors and subcontractors. Also, the board knows this, that the first draft of fiscal year 2016 budget has been distributed for review to the trustees. Budget must be passed by July 31 and filed with the Gold County Clerk's Office. So you've heard us reference that tonight. So we're working towards that pending report.
Thank you. Development, trustee Holson?
Yes, sir. Again, I think economic development director Kevin Davis is doing a great job. He jumped into everything, little speed. He has given you a report. I'll give it to the clerk afterwards for him to open the notes. Two, three things. Gold County Health Department opened up on June 5th, an opening. It's separated from Environmental Health, Family Health, Behavioral Health Services. Indian Victory Motorcycles of Monee is going to have a grand opening to be announced, but they are having a great summer cookout on June 13th with a Zac Brown concert trip, a new grill, all types of things happening there. Animal Wellness Center is going to be celebrating their 10th anniversary. So we do have businesses that are staying in Monee. The, Mr. Daly attended the Chicago South on Fiber Network Open House on June 4th. And the most exciting part, and I'll be careful how I say this because some of this may still be information we don't want out publicly, but he's involved in three different business development deals right now. One with an 80 parcel, acre parcel intended to affect potentially 60 to 100 single family homes in the Monee area. That might include some free annexation. Number two with a video gaming cafe. And number three with an upscale hotel development. And again, all of those because of the nature of them, we can't run discussions with, but Mr. Daly is doing an excellent job of working on all these things to keep me committed. That's all.
Thank you very much. Building services and code enforcement?
Both.
Highway safety and police?
Couple of things, Mr. Mayor. EMA survey training will be Saturday, June 27th from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. at Fireman's Park Building. It's open to those that are interested. Police, Special Olympics, law enforcement, tour, swarm ran through Monee at 12:30 today and finished up a federal signal at University Park. And Monee Cop on Top raised $3,368. The Raffle raised $4,350. The total so far around $19,000 this year.
Enter report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah. And, and if you don't mind, if I just want to throw something in there with the police. I think you're all aware of the difficult climate that our police nationwide face and the scrutiny and the hostility and everything else that goes on there. If you have opportunity, when you see a police officer, smile, wave at them, thank them for doing their jobs. It's not an easy job when everybody wants to throw every possible excuse as to why they don't deserve to be whatever. So take the time and acknowledge and thank them for doing their jobs, just like every other department. So, sir. I'm sorry.
Just as a courtesy.
Yeah. In case, in case you all didn't hear that, the chief was requesting that all five fingers be used. That's what we got. So. Wow, thanks. I was expecting that, but thank you. Trustee Holson, I know you mentioned the, the development or the, the, the announcement for Indian motorcycles having their big event this weekend. Animal Wellness is having theirs on-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sunday.
Sunday, how long ago was it? Like noon to three or something like that on Sunday?
It's June 14th, 12 to 3. Hospital tours, raffle prizes, giveaways, a chance to be a new veterinarian and a balloon artist, base painter, hot dogs and cotton candy.
Oh, did hot dogs get it? Hot dogs. Anyhow. Larry's sitting on the radio side and we went to fire a couple of times now with Larry. Larry, there's been a request for us to simply table the voting on all 13 items. You know, we've been working on these for several months in some cases. I just want to let, let the board know there's a, there's a number of these that have to do with, I believe it's four or five years ago, we created the implementation of an adjudicator, which is a local hearing officer for ordinance violations. Prior to, prior to that, everything had to go to the circuit court, the Peatone Court to be heard. We had a number of ordinances that based on the way they were structured, did not effectively enable the hearing officer- enable the hearing officer to do their, to do their job, and do, give them the latitude they need to exercise grace, whatever the case may be. So that's where a lot of these come from. There's a few others that are in here, that have been, some that have been discussed. I believe trustee Gonzalez had talked to Mary Jo, a survey had been done regarding item number ten pertaining to tobacco, tobacco-free public places, which is basically mimicking, not mimicking, going along with state law. And that's what a lot of these are, a lot of these are merely identifying either fee, fine structures that are consistent with state law, or other policies. And part of Parks and Rec was an encouragement, and we've had a number of people from baseball and things like that ask that we have a, you know, smoke-free public areas and stuff like that. We already have an alcohol-free area in that regard. It's something to be considered. Presenting these ordinances, just as an example, does not mean that they're necessarily gonna get passed or not. They're being presented because of the expressed desire to see certain things happen. The one that Commissioner Pearson referenced was pertaining to police personnel guidelines. The simple explanation for that is that it'll, it would allow for, Larry, help me out on this, that it would allow for management to recognize a part-time employee. And that's what we'd like to do here, in the front office, public works, things like that. DJ started off as a part-time, you know, and now he's a department head. You know, it's nice to be able to recognize people's work ethics, their, their effectiveness on the street, so to speak, and give management the latitude to acknowledge that versus somebody who might test well on paper, and they could have good bookmarks, George, you and I talked about this the other night, they might have very good bookmarks, but not necessarily be as effective as somebody you already know, that's part of your rank and file, they've already had to field training, or at least a measure of that done, things of that sort. So this was presented to the police commission attorney, as well as the village council. Village council actually drafted it, I believe, after you drafted it, Larry, did you, you review them with police commission attorney?
I guess so, yes, sir.
Okay. And so, in talking to Mr. Pearson, one of the things that, we, we merely want to make sure that we are giving latitude to remote people, and acknowledge that, I know that there's lateral points, after you get exact terminology, and I know the effort that's been put forth there. One of the things Larry had suggested, or when he and I talked to him earlier, was that a provision could be added to, which one was that, K eight? A provision could be added to that, that would allow for this to be such that, rather than it just strictly be a management recommendation, that they would have to be with a consent and approval of the police commission. So any candidate that would be considered for this would have to ultimately be finally approved by the police commission. So that it's not taking it out of the police commission's hands, it's merely allowing them also to participate in recognizing there's some people that just frankly don't test well, but they deliver well, and to, to afford them that opportunity. So that was motivation and the reasoning behind it. Not to take anything away from them, but if that particular clause is not in here, that needs to be, Larry, that's something you can look into making a correction on. These are being presented because, Doug, you know, some of these have been worked on for, some that you've been involved in have been worked on for a year and a half. It's just taken that long to compile a lot of this, and it's not been easy. We want to afford our police, our code enforcement, we want to afford all in the ability to effectively do their job. As it stands right now, we have some ordinances that, because of the, you know, we've got trucks, semis driving down Court Street, because they'd rather take a chance on a fifty-dollar citation, because to them, it's, it's not a big risk for them. They'd rather take their chances on, say, well, I got this GPS told me it's okay, you know, things of that sort. So by correcting our ordinances, to make them consistent with the state guidelines, and to do different things in that regard, it merely recommend, it merely encourages our police to give them some empowerment to deal with some of those things. So they're discouraged from driving right through, you know, we got a speed limit twenty-five here, and that was tough to swallow, because we got a lot of pushback on that. But I feel a little bit better personally, knowing that, well, we got kids out there playing, but if you got a big truck, or you drive trucks occasionally, you know, they're not the easiest to stop, no matter how slow you're going, you know? And they don't belong, excuse me, they don't belong on our residential local streets. Court Street is not a truck route, you know? They go to South and Little Center, they go to Pauline, and that's the route they're supposed to take. Things of that sort, you know, lucky Jersey, how bad it is, you know? You can imagine, that's in other areas of town as well, we got our bridges. Anthony, you brought it to me the other day, what was, you had some comments made regarding the bridges and such, what was that about?
One of the village residents was saying that, one of the village residents was explaining to me, the reason why the Court Street Bridge is so bad is because our weight limit is up too high, but it needs to be lowered. And that's ultimately why we have all these potholes on the bridge, is because the truck traffic that goes down Court Street, which we all, we're gonna have to pay to get it repaired.
So these were put together, delivered to you, I believe, when they were delivered, Wednesday, Friday, last week, Saturday, Saturday there. I'm not in a great big hurry to get these deployed, it's taken us almost a year and a half to get some of these put together. I don't have any problem with making a request, that if somebody wants to make a motion, to simply table all thirteen of these till the next meeting. And then if you have feedback and suggestions for any adjustments, funnel that through the administrator or myself, and we can try to consolidate those concerns and questions, and have a ready answer for the next meeting. But Larry, if, is, is that okay to actually make a motion to, to table all thirteen? So I entertain a move.
I'll make that motion.
What's that?
I'd like to discuss too.
Sure.
Situation.
Right.
Number one, why is it being tabled? Did you pull the trustees? Who made that decision? Not the vastest.
The table.
You said it was a consensus.
No, I never said it was a consensus.
Sir?
I never said it was a consensus.
You said some kind of word that indicated that others are aware of.
I, I heard some of the trustees wanted more time to.
So you've talked to some trustees?
No, I've heard that through the administrator.
Well.
I've actually sent, I sent a message out to all the trustees, Saturday or Sunday, whatever it was, and I, and I said, hey, if you guys have any questions, I'm always available.
Here's the problem, may I say, that I have, I think thirteen ordinances at one board meeting is very excessive. I don't think any of us are lawyers, and we have to go to the original ordinance to see what the change is, because the change doesn't show up on this. And it's a lot of legal talk, too. I think this should be a special board meeting dealing with these ordinances. And I think at any board meeting, we shouldn't have more than two or three ordinances to work with at any one time. That, that's just my opinion, I don't know how the other board members feel, but, but we're discussing this right now.
Sure.
And I'm giving you my side of it, how I feel. I wasn't prepared, and I looked through the book and tried to analyze every one of these, and I don't know that I come up with the correct answers, if I may say. Okay, as one person, I would like to hear all the trustees give input to every ordinance we do. That's just my opinion. I like, you know, it's a lot better than one person coming up with something special.
I, I get it, and, and let me answer that, if I could, real quickly. We haven't had any new ordinances, Wayne, help me out on this bit. We haven't had any new ordinances per se like this, we've had ordinances where they've been defined ordinance numbers because of the agreements and things like that we've entered into, but actually going through and, some of these go hand in hand with each other, because of the nature of going through and correcting.
I saw that, too. But it took you months to put it together.
It would do, absolutely.
We have to look at it in three days.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. They were put on here for everybody to review. It doesn't matter to me if you want to take another month to pass them, all that does is defer our ability for the police enforcement, wherever else, to effectively utilize it. But regardless, they're here for your review, take as long as you want. They're, if you want to take two weeks, you want to take two months.
I want to discuss.
I, I, I've done my part, the attorneys have done their part.
And I want to discuss it with all the trustees, not by myself, or.
It's fine.
One-on-one with our lawyer, and/or you.
It's fine.
I'd like to hear input from everyone, and these are major decisions that will just make, it, it could be a very negative reaction.
Okay.
To the truckers stopping in this community, and every other thing going on.
Absolutely.
And they have these hand radios, or whatever they use today, to communicate with each other, and they may just say, let's avoid the stop at Moni, and go to Piattone or Metz, and we could lose a lot of business here.
Well, just.
Just, just some of my concern, I need to be convinced differently.
Okay.
So I got that from discussing with some people.
Trustee Horn had something, but let me address the, the trucker aspect of it. Every road that's in our commercial areas, or industrial areas, has been, has been listed as a separate weight limit requirement that is consistent with the state eighty thousand pound road limit. So all of those in our commercial, industrial, anything that's commercial, industrial in nature, has already been designated that. What we don't want to have happen is, you look at Gulf Vista Streets, they're in need of repair. Now, you don't have truckers going through there that I'm aware of, but you understand what happens, is if you have residential street, streets that are not designed for that load rating, and you expose them to truckers going to and from wherever, and they're not acknowledging the designated truck routes, and that's what, that's what a lot of this has to do with, is just merely recognizing the designated truck routes, and we're not slowing anybody, stopping anybody from using Moni Manhattan Road, Governor's Highway, any of the industrial zones, wherever else, the county, the state roads, we're not even addressing all this. This is, only has to do with what is commonly referred to as residential zones. And if somebody's got a bill of lading, and if somebody has a bill of lading that takes them to an area like, this is a residential zone area here, but if they got a bill of lading, take them into the village hall, you know, for public works to get a load, they have no choice, that's what they do. And the cops are not gonna give anybody, we've got heavy equipment that's been dropped off here in the last couple of days, well overweight for what we normally deal with, but they're scarfing to us. You know, those things weigh, DJ, I don't know how much they weigh, but they have an exemption because it's a lot, so.
May or everyone have brought up, you, you have a lengthy discussion about it and why, but we do not. That's what I'm getting at, we need to have a board meeting on ordinances, that's what I like to see happen.
Trustee Horn.
I, you know, thirteen is, you're right, Jim, thirteen is a lot to digest, I didn't get through all of them in the time that I've had to pack it, but if we, if we table all of them, it just sets everything back. I, I think we should, let's go, it's only seven-thirty, let's get cracking, let's do a couple of them, let's talk about a few of them, starting with K one.
I disagree.
I'll say I'll vote no.
I'll make, I'll make, I'll make the ball over here, I'll make the motion we table.
Table all thirteen?
No discussion. Best purpose of procedure. Mr. Attorney, correct?
I, I just want to clarify, you want to table all thirteen?
Make the motion we table all thirteen.
Thank you. Second?
Yes, sir.
Because we have a whole, Holson and Pop. Any discussion now?
There is no discussion on that, sir, you cannot debate or discuss, get tabled.
Table's automatic, I mean, there's a roll call now, you know?
I'm sorry.
After the motion for the table and the second, I believe there's a roll call.
That's correct, no discussion.
Well, you actually said no discussion, it's part of the motion.
I said table, the, the, Mr. Attorney?
You're correct.
Sure. Roll call.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Raisin?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
And Ward?
No.
Would the board like to simply have, because there are a hundred designated time to table this too, so they're all tabled at this point, in theory, till the next meeting?
Correct, you're right.
Is two weeks adequate to review and, and gather questions and presenting to the administrator?
I'd like to make the motion that we have a special meeting to review these before the next meeting, and that we go through these as trustee Pop recommended in detail. I certainly agree with trustee Horn that we need to do that, I just don't think tonight's the night, we need more room.
Second add.
Do we want to pick a date?
I think.
The planning and zoning meeting is not scheduled to take place on the week from now, if you would like to schedule for Wednesday, the seventeenth.
I think.
So there's a motion for a special meeting, we're clarifying that that would be for the seventeenth, a week from tonight, at six-thirty minutes. If we can have it a little bit later, I'd be grateful personally, but.
How, how you're from there, do you have seven months on time?
If we can, thank you for seven-thirty, I'd be grateful. I, I don't care what you get.
Is there a getting visa?
If that's okay. Seven-thirty on the.
I'll amend my motion to seven-thirty.
Good. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Raisin?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. But for the point of expediencing, gather any of your questions in advance, and please, as, as indicated before, direct them either through the administrator or myself, I'm always available, my phone doesn't ring very often, it's surprising, but if anybody has a question, they want to direct to me personally, that's fine as well.
Discussion, may I say, what do you say?
Certainly.
As a point of, what I would recommend moving down the road is, these generally speaking are legislative things that should be done through this board.
Correct.
We should be the ones initiating this, I think we've had this discussion before.
True.
I'm not sure where these originated, I do know you've worked very hard on them, and for the record, you have discussed a number of these with me, not all of them, but a number with, with me previously.
Correct.
And in general, what I would recommend, we talked about doing down the road, is these type of things should have an author.
Sure.
They should have somebody who supports it.
Sponsor, or whatever you want to sponsor.
Right.
Sponsor, I'm sorry.
Correct.
And so I recommend we work at these type of things, number one, being dumb, an ordinance ought to be introduced tonight, and then voted on the next meeting, at a general statement. And I think that ought to be our attitude and our goal. And as a general rule, I'd like to see a sponsor, so that if it's a police ordinance, there's the police sponsor right there.
Correct.
If it's a finance ordinance, there's the finance person right there. And I think that would take care of some of the issues we might have discussed tonight.
I don't disagree, that would be the correct and best way to deal with it. Larry and I have discussed some of these over a period of time, and, and we acknowledge that unlike Springfield or Washington, trustees, you know, have a hard enough time just reading these in a short amount of time, it's a part-time responsibility. But I agree, trustee Olson, I commend you also for, you know, being a sponsor, if you will, for the nuisance and the landlord licensing issues in that regard. It's a force that I know of in Moni, that a trustee is actually taking the time to be involved in any of the legislation.
No, I think a tree ordinance was penned by a trustee as well.
Okay, okay.
I just think, when we have, when we have trustees that are sponsoring, working with these, I think they go all the way.
So, I, I agree. All right, nothing under, also under the attorney's report?
I have nothing further, Alan.
Full business? Nothing? Okay. Non-agenda items open to the public?
Hello, my name is Ken Vasika from forty-nine twenty-four La Quinta in Moni. I asked you last week about rental. I asked you last week about rental over in Gulf Vista and the original agreement that was passed on to ELS at the time of purchase. I'd like you to be able to address that with me.
Uh, yes, sir. I did review the, I believe the agreement was a special use permit issued, I want to say nineteen ninety-three between the village of Moni and at that time, the initial developer, I think it was Mr. Ferrara. That agree, the special use permit with the planned unit development, it was silent as to rentals. Uh, and mainly for, and I'll give you a copy if I can find, uh, one at the office for you. Um, it addressed mainly what the plans were from a financial standpoint. Who would be allowed to occupy the premises, uh, timeframe, phases. Uh, but I did not see anything in there per se, sir, regarding the right to rent or the, you know, what the, uh, leasing would have the ability to do over there. It was silent. And as far as I can tell, the only modification that we made since then dealt with, and this is probably fifteen years ago, dealt with the different phases. Uh, it was supposed to be, I think, a nine-phase project. Uh, there were some infrastructure issues that we dealt with, again, fifteen years ago. But as far as I can tell, sir, there was nothing in that agreement. It was silent as to rental. It just indicated that the individuals who had the right to reside there had to be, uh, as they indicated in the document, older individuals over fifty-five.
All right. What would be the position of the village in growth and expansion of Gulf Vista if they were to be able to want to change the product in any way in regards to either A, turn these into rental units, or B, uh, add more units to the, to the existing plan? What would, what would be the position of the village on that?
Yeah, Larry and I talked about this earlier. Adding units to the plan?
Yes.
They, they still are well below their maximum allowed capacity as far as for units. Um, I forget what the exact number is. One of the reasons why, they're like twenty below one of their next thresholds. Um, once they go above that additional twenty units, uh, they're actually required to pay us another impact fee. Uh, and that's probably why they're hovering kind of in the margins they're in. Uh, I don't know that ultimately they're going to avoid that threshold just for that reason, because if they're growing that much, then they're going to deal with it. But we don't have a, we don't have anything that's going to restrict them based on the PUD that the attorney refers. Uh, as far as for the rental, uh, I had a discussion with a gentleman earlier that brought up, even though it may not specifically state an opposition to rental units, I believe the documentation did also distinctly refer to them as homeowners. And the term homeowner would not be the same as an occupant, would not be the same as a resident. Uh, so legally, that was something I, I brought to the attorney's attention this afternoon. He has not had a chance at this point to re-review any of those documents to see if that nuance of that stipulation of homeowner, uh, language uh, would cause the rental option to be inconsistent.
My concern would be that that could be enforceable. Whether or not, if, if that was the case, would the village be able to take a stand in one direction that that would, that would not be permissible?
If I may, sir, you know, it's probably best that the village would talk about this internally before we make a position on the record on that, because we've had discussions with Gulf Vista on different occasions, on different issues. And it might be best that the board know what the ramifications would be one way or another before we went on the record, uh, state our position.
With the lack of interest that Gulf Vista has shown by their maintenance and et cetera, et cetera, I just wanted to know where the village stands with Gulf Vista if, if, you know, every village has a twenty-year plan. Are you planning on everything status quo? I mean, are there any projected changes?
There's not been any expectation that equity lifestyle of Gulf Vista is, whatever the management company oversight of that would be, would not continue as operating as expected. The ordinance and the development agreement stipulates that in the event that they fail to adhere to the development agreement, that it refers back to the most restrictive residential zoning. The most restrictive residential zoning, to my perspective, and Larry corrected me on this, would be a state homes, which is like two acre parcels. That's not going to happen in that climate with what you have on there. Most restrictive meaning that they have a reason to make sure that they stay consistent with the development agreement. We have been very gracious to a fault, uh, with issues that have gone on in Gulf Vista. And because there's been a change of management a couple of times. And we're trying to be as sensitive to that as possible. But the reality is, if they're in violation of our grass cutting ordinance, it's one parcel. Actually, there's three, three or four parcels. The commercial one's on the front, and then all the homes are actually in a separate parcel as far as the county is defined, uh, that area. The, it's, it's pretty sad that the greens have been like shag carpet. You know, there's what I've heard from some of your, uh, golfers. Uh, it could be enforced, as it should. And there again, we've tried to be as gracious to them as we have to other commercial and other residential property owners. Uh, the fact that it is so big of an area, uh, makes it even more noticeable. It's not just the folks that live in Gulf Vista that notice it. It's everybody driving down Court Street.
Absolutely.
And, and it, and it's become a, a little bit of an eyesore and a, and a, a, it, it does not look good on us. And, you know, we don't want to create a, too much of a conflict of a relationship with Gulf Vista, but at the same, you know, or with management team there. But the reality is it does need to be enforced, just like the age restrictions have to be enforced. Now, have we given them some grace? Have we actually brought names to their attention? Uh, yeah, but here's the problem. You've got people that are living in Gulf Vista that they take on the responsibility of caregivers for their grandchildren. They all of a sudden, you know, stuck with, you know, whatever the situation is. You've got school buses now that are picking up kids in there. There were no impact fees given to the school district when that development was put in. There's nothing that allowed for that. Uh, and the goal and expectation is completely contrary to that. We've got a school district in and of itself that's having a hard enough time dealing with its financial woes. And now we're deliberately allowing, and I say that with a little bit of a question, uh, these violations to take place and doing nothing to approach it. That's something I think the board, I need some feedback from the board as well as the general community. We, Larry, we, we have a responsibility to address these issues. Now, the rental portion of it that you brought up, that's a nuance of legalese that the attorney will have to go through and review again, now that we have some extra insight onto that. But all the other issues, the age, you know, violations where your previous manager deliberately encouraged people under the fifty-five age to move in, deliberately just said, "Dad, don't worry about it. Don't tell anybody." That kind of an attitude. That's regardless of whether it's a previous manager or not, it's the same company. And at this point, we theoretically, theoretically, because I don't know that I want to get into a big litigious situation, we could impose the most restrictive zoning. Now, we do say that with a little bit of guardedness, because if we did impose that, that means, most restrictive means that the homes that are in there don't qualify. So do you guys want to move? Probably not. So that's the reason why we're being as careful in how to deal with this as possible.
With the lack of interest that Gulf, uh, that ELS has shown in that neighborhood, it was my intent to be able to find out whether or not they had communicated any change or what, what interest they had and, and what you know about it.
I, I've talked to Mr. Grusbeck, uh, Mr. Snow in the past. Uh, I, I think that if for some reason ELS showed absolutely no appetite for doing what needs to be done, I think the best thing that could happen to that community would be resident home community or some sort of a partnership with the village to make that happen. Because the outside management team is only concerned about raising money and continuing to raise your pool. I don't, I don't know how you've lived there, but I've heard that it's gone double or triple what it was when people moved in there ten years ago. And the only way to, to, to make sure that it's, like, when we run our water department, we don't do it for a profit. We don't do it for a loss. We're trying not to. Uh, but when you're running to, to put money in the hands of the shareholders for that community, uh, it's not going to, the shareholders are not, it's not an employee, it's not a resident-owned environment. So if ELS is not going to move forward with it, I personally would try to find some way possible as a, as a municipality to see about getting it converted, even if we had to do something to help support that initiative to a resident-owned environment. I think that'd be the best way possible to deal with it.
Thank you for bringing that to the table, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Mary, question. What I, what I hear Ken's question would be, have we met with ELS themselves?
Yes. Ruben has met with them multiple times.
Okay. And so we have not gotten anything defended from them?
And again, trying to be as gracious as possible, because we can come down heavy on the management team, but ultimately that has a trickle-down effect on every resident that lives there.
May I ask you, Ruben, what individual did you deal with or individuals from ELS? Just the management team?
No, with the regional manager, Mr. Snow.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Senator Sback, two-five-six-five-four Firestone in Gulf Vista. Two items, if I may. Organ seven forty-four, Mr. Attorney, believes states neither pro or con concerning renters, but it makes constant reference to homeowners.
Correct.
Second item, and there's been some heavy things that have been discussed tonight, and this may be a minor issue. But rules are rules, and I want to pass it on. Concerning zoning regulations and removal of signs, any sign that's been up that's three months or longer that's not effective should be removed and taken down. On the old docks building, there is a sign there concerning karate. Karate has not been in that building for probably over a year. I think we need to tend to that sign. Thank you.
I guess I'll add too that if that's also the case, the dollar store would be the same way. The lady's been making for all over the period.
Gary Sullivan, two-five-seven-five-five, Lambert Drive. Used to be a happy homeowner in Gulf Vista. I know you don't want to hurt us in the long run.
Right.
But the village, if people are trying to buy a home here and they see this, oh, let's go driving through, dude, this looks like a nice area, and they see the condition. You can drive, drive up and down every street, and you can pick out the ELS homes and lots. Ninety-five percent of the people that have laws there, there isn't one dandelion. There isn't one weed. And as far as profit, if you want to stock to ELS, in the last ten years, they've returned twenty percent. Last year, they made forty-six percent.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, Norv Snow, two-five-seven-one-eight, Shenandoah, over Gulf Vista. The rent is a lease to own, as you know, and they either have to get out after two years or buy. That's the way the lease is stated over there. And they have sold a lot of there, but I don't know how many people have gone beyond the two years and not bought it. Tried to keep track of it because we have so many other problems over there. Uh, we had a board meeting Monday night, and I had a podium set up and they had people come up. And everybody gave their, uh, what they thought, and they were blunt, let me tell you, about Kevin and his boss and Joan. And, uh, there were thirteen comments of different items. I passed them all on to them. But, uh, they're trying to, trying to work with us, but they just, they, I told him that the root cause was greed. And he came back and says, "That is false."
Absolutely.
And I said, "I was on a training team at Reynolds-Lumner for five years doing total property management, and we did root cause analysis. I said, 'If you can come up with anything else, I'd be glad to listen to you.'" I said, "Mismanagement is just a symptom." And it is just greed. Like Gary said, uh, ELS, uh, Real Estate Investment Trust, forty-four percent last year. So, and he just got sued for a hundred and eleven million in California and won from one park. He just let it deteriorate. Things are backing up. Uh, if you go on and Google him, uh, he's got what, just, uh, suit after suit after suit. Most of them are in eleven to twelve million, which is, you know, pocket change to him. And, uh, but this one hit him for a hundred and eleven million. And, um, so, um, we are looking at ways to, uh, upset him in the future.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Phil, I'm ready. Two-five-eight-two-eight, moving forward. Just a day for moving. You said you were starting to make a list of all the property that the village owns? I didn't quite understand that.
Equipment.
Equipment, the equipment?
Assets.
Just for the public word?
No, everything.
All of, oh, the whole village. Oh, okay. So you don't have a list now?
A partial list. It was given to our, we have Swarm, as he indicated, is our Southwest Agency for Risk Management. They're, they're into our liability and certain responsibilities, some insurance. They have a, I don't know, called a modest list, and we've also used that with our auditors. One of the things that our auditors have actually stipulated that we need, and you can attest to this, is that we need to have a better idea of what our real assets are, not just real estate, which we have a, a list of, uh, but also all of our, uh, uh, equipment, capital investments, things of that sort.
Computers and things?
Absolutely, absolutely. Furnishings, things of that sort. And we, we do a lot of those, because if there's, let's say if there's a tornado that's got this building, you know, what's the value for it?
Watch it out the window.
But my point is, is if there was a disaster or whatever kind of other situation like that, we have a basic idea of what some of those things are. But I think what Ruben's referring to is a good practice that other municipalities have begun to do is actually, uh, doing inventory where you're actually barcoding and stuff of most of your, you know, anything over a thousand dollars or five hundred dollars or whatever the threshold is, you basically put that as an inventory item, and you have a barcode system of some sort for, for tracking those items. Uh, that's why he said there's equipment and software involved for setting up that methodology. But, you know, we have, I mean, the public works alone, I mean, I, I can only imagine all the equipment that we have. And you could call some of them tools, but they're actually equipment. They're not a vehicle. They're not a titled vehicle. They're not a titled piece of property. But there's any number of other assets we have. You know, even working in the police department, radar guns, you know, police bicycles that we have, different things of that sort.
I always thought that was part of like when you did the, um, CPA does the urine thing. They always like do depreciation on equipment, so you don't even have a total?
We, we have for our depreciation, but realized municipalities have only more recently adopted, Norv, you want to come up and address those, Daryl's not hearing that.
Oh, okay.
But they're, they more recently have adopted more of what is the standard of regular accounting. I say regular accounting.
Yeah.
I'm using my terms as much as I can here. Whereas depreciation was not something municipalities really worried about in the past. They didn't use standard bookkeeping practices. What they did was they merely said, "Okay, everything's an expense." And they didn't really keep track of things as a depreciable asset.
Okay, yeah.
And then what Ruben was referring to is when you identify a trend and something's getting near the end of its life cycle because you depreciated it off or because you can anticipate that it's become more costly to continue to maintain than it is to just simply replace it, those are things that you can more effectively help us in our budgeting process and anticipating our growth needs of, of resources.
I didn't know that many municipalities didn't really do that.
A lot of them did not.
Yeah. Well, I, I'd like to add on to that.
Please.
Again, Ruben and I attended a meeting this, last week with a number of municipalities in the area. And, and it's not uncommon for them not to have this. Uh, and, and again, I want to point out that even before this meeting, Ruben was already working on that. Um, but it is something we do need to have, because when we talk about buying a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar building, the question is, what did we have before that? How long did it last? And from an accounting point of view, is it full of depreciation? Right?
It's probably more than snow. And you don't know it. What, what are you doing now?
Could be. And, and so they're working on it.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Anybody know the score of the Hawks game?
Zero, zero.
Still living Gulf Vista. Zero, zero? Zero, zero at the end of one. I have Hawks score. Okay, as far as greed, the people on the golf course pay an average of $70 a month, 140 homes, $9,800 a month extra from the people on the golf course. You'd think they'd be able to cut the grass, and they also get $9,800 in the winter months if there's no snow, it's pure profit, and also the people that moved in originally paid $10,000 for the golf course view. And I was told that Gulf Vista's private property?
It is.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. Why does the village have to give a certificate of occupancy when people move in?
We have to do that for every residence, for every commercial.
Every residence?
Regardless of whether it's on one big parcel like that.
Okay.
See, that is all private property, this is always where Mr. Corzal is, you know, Ms. Powell, we all live on private property.
Okay.
So, private property is just a designation as compared to public property, which is going right away now.
So, the homes have to, you can enforce codes for the house?
Absolutely. If somebody's building a deck and they didn't get a permit, and you've seen where, I've driven through there, I've seen them, decks are starting to lean away from, or the pits are wrong way, you can't even open the door sometimes, all because people took it upon themselves to do an ADA ramp of some sort, which ended up not being set properly, the foundations weren't done according to our code, because they didn't get a permit and weren't inspected, and now you have problems. So, there's a number of things that are over there that have been inherited by us as have been inherited by you, so, but it is private property, but we do have enforcement rights.
Okay.
Or, I should not say not just rights, but responsibility. Anything else for open to the public? We don't have anything else, have anything for executive session? I would like to say, I know I made the comment earlier about, at least, making sure you're appreciative of what they're doing, our Public Works Department is doing a phenomenal job with all the moving and shaking and everything going on with all the rooms and everything else, we have disturbed and caused other problems in a verging way, so if there's a lack of what you consider to be timely communication, it is not because we didn't take the steps necessary to alert people ahead of time of the situations, it is because something came up very unexpectedly, and our Public Works Department, led by Northern and Mr. Corzal himself, has done a phenomenal job of being quick on their feet and getting things done, so please, understand that if you didn't know it in advance, it's because we didn't know it in advance, because things happen, just like water main breaks in the wintertime, things happen. So, if you see them working, if you see like Original Avenue, it's southbound on light, you go the wrong way, you will be ticketed, and it's a matter of life safety, there's trucks out at southbound on Original as an example, if you try going north, I don't think you're going to win if you come head-to-head with a semi, so keep that in mind. Thank you, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll entertain that motion.
And was it second?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Racing?
Yes.
Thank you. Go Hawks.